Well, good evening. It is 6:30 PM, April 8th, 2021, and I'm going to call the order. This regular scheduled meeting of the school board for Independent School District 191. Again, good evening and welcome to everybody that is attending, those that are watching us virtually and those that are here this evening. On a special note, I would like to say that this is the first time our board has been back together for a year in person, and I'm very happy for that. I think we all have already, having barely started the evening, have a newfound appreciation for what our teachers and staff are going through, given that we're wearing shields and masks and all the other precautions this evening, so thank you. Director Alt, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
At special allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we will head into the informational section of our meeting this evening. Beginning with a report about Burnsville High School 9th grade with the presenters Dave Helke, Chris Belmont, Kim Herd, Michelle Henderson, Jay Lepper, and Erica Jones.
Point of order, Chair. We need to approve the agenda.
I can't, you have to...
We need to approve the agenda.
My apologies, yes. My computer chose to go to the screen. All right, yes, I, my, thank you for reminding us. We do need to begin by approval of our tonight's agenda. May I have a motion, please, for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, seconded by Director Connor, seconded by Director Webb. All those in fa- or, excuse me, we are going to be continuing being, doing roll call votes, even though we're all present, given that we're under the executive emergency acts at the moment. So Ms. Candy, will you please call the roll?
Werb?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Said?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Chester?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Hugh?
Aye.
Okay. Off to a rocky start, but I promise the move's a little bit smoother after this. Now, we're going to head into our informational section with a report about Burnsville High School 9th grade. Speakers Dave Helke, Chris Belmont, Kim Herd, Michelle Henderson, Jay Lepper, and Erica Jones. All right, who is presenting, beginning with this?
So I can get started, Chair Miller. Thank you, Board of Education Superintendent Battle, for the opportunity tonight to share with you our presentation, starting strong on a focus on Grade 9 here at Burnsville High School. And really, tonight, we're going to do an overview, next slide, Aaron, of past to present. We'll touch a lot on what we're doing intentionally, the effort and the work being put into 9th grade success, how we welcome our 9th grade to the high school, and then just looking forward on the work we want to build on and continue to do. Next slide. So the 9th grade at the high school started many years ago. Some of the conversation actually started even pre Vision 191, but Vision 191 really brought the idea together of getting our 9th graders up here at the high school to be 1912 comprehensive high school. And there was really three driving forces behind that at the time. One was credits, another was a college and career focus, and the third was building a stronger community with our 9th graders and upperclass. And so we feel that over the years, it's been five years now that we've been able to accomplish those, but we know that we have much work ahead to strengthen that experience for our 9th graders. Next slide. Again, bringing the 9th graders to the high school, we really wanted to make sure they had a comprehensive experience, and that was easier to achieve with having them all together at one high school as opposed to across multiple, back then junior highs. And so it really ensured that our 9th graders had opportunity and access, all of our 9th graders had opportunity and access, so there was equity across all of our 9th grade. Our programs were aligned, and there was consistency with the rigor and expectation across the curriculum and the experience. Next slide. And really, the reason we have been putting such a focus on 9th grade is we know that the outcome we want for all of our students is to see them walk across that stage, to graduate and to have a plan for leaving high school. And there's lots of research out there. This is one piece from the Gates Foundation, says it very succinctly, "Research shows that whether students graduate from high school is largely determined during their freshman year." So that's why you're going to hear tonight from several people, all the effort that is put into the things we do to support our 9th grade. Thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Belmont.
Thanks, Dave. We can go to the next slide. So here again is a visual that I know the board saw briefly before, and this is really like our heartbeat for what we're trying to do for our students early and often, all the way through graduation to their post-secondary life. You'll see on the, around the circle, Success 191, peer mentoring, student-family engagement systems, and advisory systems. So this is really our 612 methodology in addition to our core academic experience, which is going to guarantee that those students have those buckets filled with opportunity knowledge, access to rigorous academic learning, and student agency. And we're going to tease that out a little bit more for you, so we can go to the next slide. And actually, like, for this next slide, I want to introduce two people that I admire so much, right? So we have this, this visual, and the visual and the vision is only as successful if we have people implementing it successfully. So to talk a little bit about Link Crew is Ms. Kim Herd, math instructor and Link Crew advisor, and Ms. Erica Jones, incredible 11th grade scholar.
Thank you. I'm Kim Herd. I've been a Link Crew coordinator for three years, and we have yet to really get the program in complete full running, but we're really excited to be able to do that next year, where we can create partnerships between our upperclassmen and small groups of 9th graders, so that they can really grow in the mentorship and really help the 9th graders feel welcome and like they have a place where they belong and they have someone they can turn to. Even though we don't run the program to its definition quite yet, the group, the kids that I've been working with over the past two years have been amazing jobs at reaching out and trying to help the 9th graders in this virtual and hybrid world in the best way they can. I could tell stories that would give you goosebumps, but I'm going to let Erica see her experience as a leader.
So hi, everyone. My name is Erica Jones, and I'm a Link Crew leader. This is something that I wish I would have had as a 9th grader, because I was just so lost in the giant school, and my Chromebook wasn't working properly. I cried almost three times my first day at school, you know? It was just a very hectic experience. I didn't have any friends as I was new to the district, and I really just wished that there was someone to guide me. And as a Link Crew leader, I'm able to do that and help explain to these 9th grade students what high school is about, but also make them feel like a part of the community, you know, telling them about clubs and activities they, they can get involved in and offering them the advice that I've gone through and learned. And I've even been able to help connect with elementary students and show them the possibilities that they will have as they get older. And I'm able to see part of myself in them, and it's really great to just, you know, connect with them and fill that hole that I had whenever I didn't have this, but I can still give this to other people who need this.
Go to the next slide. And board, that's just a snapshot of how authentic and exceptional Erica is. I think you could have a whole presentation on what she does for the world around her and herself at Burnsville High School. Success 191 is another mechanism, right? It's our 9th graders take that first semester. So it's a daily course, it's credit bearing, it's a graduation expectation, and it really is meant to give students the tools and the resources, the knowledge, and the agency to start things right at, at Burnsville High School. So we have, like Ms. Herd and, and Erica, we're describing mentorship that occurs throughout that 6th through 9th grade transition in different ways. We also want to make sure that academics and skill building occurs too, and success 191 is a big reason, or a big method for that. We can go to the next slide. Our advisory systems is a, is a multi-year mechanism to ensure students have opportunity knowledge, access to course, courses that are aligned to their brilliance and their dreams and hopes, and then that they have that authentic relationship. So our advisory system, all of our licensed staff are advisors to help keep numbers down. I'll just share example, like I, I have 15 9th grade scholars who are so amazing, and I do believe that the advisory program's really important for them. I'm thinking of one 9th grade scholar who, she's on, we're seventh, or I'm sorry, we're her fifth school in the last seven years, and the first time she's been at Burnsville Schools is this year. And so trust is understandably needing to be earned for her, and I can just share through the advisory program that we have seen tremendous outcomes from that student, and I know that that matriculates throughout our system and will only get better as we get through this first year of advisory and continue to strengthen it and the essence of it. Wanted to share the vision with that and some of the outcomes we're already seeing of that multi-year support experience. Go to the next slide. So then, the Naviance and the Squilge and Parent View, right? So that's a mechanism to just bring, bring our, our parents into the fold, bring our students into the fold in really a systemic way, and make sure that all of our students are guaranteed those pieces in the middle. So currently, our college and career readiness systems and, and work in concert with our family engagement systems, because we know that student agency is important, and so is family agency. We know that if older siblings are, have access to rigorous academic learning, that is going to benefit the younger siblings as well as the entire family unit. So we want to not just leave that to chance, we want to create systems that are going to guarantee that occurs for students and families regardless of barriers. And it happens in 9th grade. Okay, we can go to the next slide, and I think, next, we're going to have another amazing implementer of our system, Ms. Henderson, talk about success teams. Is that correct, Ms. Henderson? Yes?
Yeah. Hello. The 9th grade success team this year has been new, and I'm just really excited to be part of it. It's made up of just wonderful dedicated professionals, and all of us have our, bring our own expertise, which help us really do what's best for kids. We have our associate principal who leads our success team, Mr. Lepper, and two counselors, myself and Ms. Markham, Courtney Flowback Jackson, our youth service coordinator, the DNa students, Jo Meyer, our wonderful school nurse, Courtney Bolio, and our social worker, Mr. Hewitt. And together, we come together and we try to be responsive into our students' needs and help make plans and do some collaboration with our 9th grade advisors on students that need more support, whether that be academic support, social emotional support, maybe they have questions about their future readiness, their career goals. We try to look at it as strategic as we can and try to make plans to best support our advisors as well as our students in accessing program and all the, everything that they might need to help them be successful throughout their four years at Burnsville High School. We do believe that setting them strong as a, as a 9th grader only will help them be more successful as they work their way through, through the high school. So we're very adaptive to the student needs, and we're very strategic in our thinking. Next, Mr. Lepper will speak about more success that we have.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Henderson. The 9th grade success team that Ms. Henderson alluded to met with 8th grade students initially in January several times as we facilitated meetings with 8th graders around the many wonderful and robust course offerings at Burnsville High School, highlighting the pathways leading to the registration process for 9th grade for these 8th grade students. We also intend to meet with the 8th grade students again in May to further grow that connection that was initially started in January, continuing the bridge to BHS, and also to have all 8th grade students fill out a survey of activities that they are interested in, to connect them with advisors and coaches at Burnsville High School, as well as to prepare to meet their needs from an extracurricular perspective. As our newest students, we want to find out their interests and their passions and what they would really like to participate in and see at Burnsville High School outside of the classroom. We want to be prepared for those newest scholars coming in to meet their needs in the extracurricular area as well. And then prior to the school year, there will be a 9th grade student and family open house and orientation that we conduct in August. And then on the first day of school, a 9th grade only first day led by, as Ms. Herd alluded to, our link leaders and advisors designed to cement the bonds that were fostered in the late winter, spring, and summer with those 8th graders. Thank you, and you can go on to the next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Lepper, for sharing that. And I just want to say that, you know, we're pouring our heart and soul into 9th grade. This has been very intentional work. We took time with our BLT prior to the school year and talked about that focus on 9th grade and, and the why behind it and what it means for us as a high school community. And we know that the work we're putting in now is going to make our students' job easier as they go through high school, and we know it's going to make our job easier as we help them go through high school, and in the end, they're going to experience a lot more success. So this slide just shares some of the work we want to continue to be focused on, continuing to strengthen all of these systems that we talked about tonight. We want to create a 9th grade scorecard that really helps us track some specific data measures, so we can see kind of year-to-year progression of the work we're doing. We want to commit to tier-one strategies and really put a focus on those things that we can do statewide, every teacher, every adult, every classroom. And then we want to reach out with intentional college and career readiness experiences for each student, so that we can increase that number of students that heard earlier this evening that are aware of pathways and what those pathways may mean to them. So we appreciated the opportunity to be here tonight and to share. We had, you know, we have phenomenal adults here at the high school, four of which joined us this evening. We have phenomenal students. Erica, thank you for joining us this evening. And I know our students are committed to creating a community that can be the best that it can be, and we are, we're thankful for that. And I am especially thankful for all the work that everyone has done. So thank you for the opportunity this evening.
Okay, thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Scott. Director him.
Can you hear me? All right. I am curious about COVID and the impact of that on this year's 9th graders. Have you noticed, what have you noticed that's been different? And are you anticipating, given that a percentage of them have been virtual all year and all the rest of them have been virtual all but two days a week for most of the year, are you anticipating needing to give this year's 9th graders any different level of support as they hopefully transition to five days a week at the high school next year?
Great, great question and something we've had lots of conversations about. What I would say is, you know, similar to almost all of our students across all of our grades, what's been more challenging this year has been really making those connections and forging those relationships and, and being able to really get to know the whole students. And so we, we know that when students come to us next year, and hopefully we're, you know, back to those five days, that, you know, yes, we are going to have to do lots of things, almost really bringing them in as 9th graders in terms of, you know, you know, helping them become members of the community, understanding the community, and really learning about high school and what high school is, and really, you know, getting to know them, because, you know, basically, you, we've lost some time here, and so, you know, the answer really, in summary, would be that it's similar to what we've noticed with all of our students, just it's been more difficult to connect, been more difficult to, to build those relationships, and we know that we're going to have to do a lot of special things for 10th graders next year, as well as the new 9th graders that we're bringing in this year.
Definitely. Thank you. And also, as a parent of a future 9th grader next fall, this has been a really good presentation, and I really appreciate all the work that's going into supporting our, our 9th graders, both this year and next year and beyond. So thank you.
Any other board members? All right, well, thank you very much to all our presenters this evening. I, I think this is an excellent example of, you know, how we have taken a, I don't want to say it's an equity type approach to, to what we need in our district. When we see a necessity for something, we add additional resources to it. So this is the excellent alignment of what we need to be, continue doing. Thank you to everybody. I would especially like to thank Erica Jones and apologize for masking your name at the beginning, but excellent job. I know it's challenging coming out and speaking to a group like this. All right. Next in our informational section, a report about the School Resources Officer Agreement. This is with the City of Burnsville Police Department. Speaking on this, Brian Gersich, Assistant Superintendent. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Chair Miller, Board of Directors, and Superintendent Battle, for this opportunity to address you this evening. As stated in the agenda item, I am here to talk about the new recommended SRO agreement for services. This does come back to January, when we had a work session about the school resource officers, and at that time had an opportunity to talk about the longstanding partnership that I believe goes back to the 1980s with having school resource officers between District 191 and Burnsville Police Department. As mentioned during that presentation, we have been working to update our agreement with the Burnsville Police Department that might better articulate a little bit of what the partnership is about and some, some additional language to really describe what our goals and opportunities are with this relationship. As you may recall from that presentation in January, Dr. Battle, Principal Helke, had run a number of different focus groups with stakeholders of Burnsville High School, and really had heard from those groups and overwhelming support for the Resource Officer Program with, with Burnsville High School. And in particular, obviously, you heard from Officer Jimenez, who has a great relationship with our students, and I think is really a great model of what we want this partnership to be about. And so as we talk about looking at revamping potentially our, our language and our contract, it's not because there's a, necessarily a problem. This is just a great opportune time to look at that, because we do have a really good partnership and relationship, but maybe it's time to take a look at the language or our contract and make sure it really does help describe and articulate what that relationship is supposed to be. So as part of that process, you know, Dr. Battle, Executive Director Ryder, and myself have been meeting with the Burnsville Police Department for a couple of years. Certainly early in the time that I was here, we had some meetings, but it was really more recently that we started talking about updating that contract language. And Dr. Battle, with some of her network through a lot of our neighboring school districts, had received some samples of other agreements with districts and their school resource officers. It was one in particular from Farmington Schools that once we had an opportunity to review it, it really started to make sense, and that was kind of the basis or a template of what we started to use to revamp our agreement with the police department as well. From there, and kind of having that, that template, I had the opportunity to work with Captain Don Stanger, who was here as part of the Resource Officer Presentation back in January, and Director Ryder had an opportunity to work with her counterpart at the Burnsville, City of Burnsville, on many of the, many of the terms and conditions and financials. I apologize, it's a little awkward, because the only person I see in presenting is myself, and so I apologize, this is taking some getting used to as well. And I can hear the laughter, which is helpful, too. So if I say something funny, I can, I can definitely hear you, even though I can't see you. So I was just kind of getting back to that, as I mentioned, Doc, Captain Stanger and I spent some time working together on a lot of the language, and, and Director Ryder worked on some of the terms and the conditions of the contract. Certainly within any partnership, when you're negotiating things, it's about aligning your interests, and there's always a back and forth in that process. And I just want to say it's been a great partnership, and we obviously were there to articulate the conditions that we thought were important for who we represented, and I really am proud of the product that we came to with some of the back and forth. Once we had a chance to pin those down, we did share them with our respective legal counsels, the attorney for the City of Burnsville, the attorney for District 191 have had input in this process and an opportunity to offer feedback as well. I'm not going to read through the entire contract or, or agreement here, because I know we've had an opportunity for the board to review that as part of the packet. There are a couple of things I would like to point out, just to highlight as a part of this agreement. The first you'll notice right away from page one is that it does clearly start to articulate and spell out the purpose, the mission, the goals of the program, and deliberately you see a lot of things about building relationships and positive environment. And certainly, again, that comes from some of the great things that you see from Officer Jimenez, as he's been able to really throw himself into that role in a great way and be that person who's creating a positive environment and building those relationships. When you flip to page four, one of the things that came up during the January, January board meeting with that work session was the desire to make sure that when we talk about training, we're including culturally proficient school systems as a part of that training, knowing that that really is who we are as a district. And so you will notice, among the other kinds of training that our SROs receive, specifically called out is CPSS, as well as PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Systems, among some of the other professional development that we would expect from our SROs. And then you will also notice, coming into the kind of next few sections there, there's a lot of specifics about the roles, the responsibilities of the SRO, as well as some of the terms and conditions of how we share information or otherwise. A lot of that does come from a review with our attorney as well. For me, next steps in, you know, moving forward perspective, one of the things that also came up as a part of our previous meeting was, you know, how do we measure success of our SRO program? And certainly, as mentioned on the front end, part of that success is measured by the longstanding relationship that we have. A lot of that success also came from the feedback that Dr. Battle and Principal Helke were able to receive as they were visiting with various groups of, of people within our Burnsville High School community. That said, a new agreement is also an opportunity to take a look at other things within this contract that we can create as a measure of success, and not that dissimilar from the 9th grade presentation that you just heard about and the development of a scorecard. Principal Helke and Mr. or Dr. Belmont are also working with our groups to try to develop some measures of success within our SRO program. And, and again, I want to say that's not because there is a problem, it's just a great time, when we have a good relationship, to talk about how are we going to measure the success of the SRO agreement and the SROs in, in our schools. So again, that is, there is a plan to kind of finalize some of those measures in the, in the coming months, hopefully sometime by, by June, with a notion of what, what you measure, the priorities of your program, what gets measured gets done. Last piece from the perspective of reviewing our, our agreement, certainly tonight it's here for your review as part of an informational item. Certainly, if we were coming forward with a general renewal of something that was going on this long, we'd probably just put it on a single board meeting, but we will be bringing this back on the 22nd for consideration for approval, because certainly this is a 12-page document that is very different from even those members who've seen our agreements in the past. It's, it's certainly more detailed than it has been before. So that would be kind of the expectation, was to hopefully bring that back, certainly hearing your feedback as needed as well, to, to bring for your approval. I again want to thank Lisa Ryder, I want to thank Captain Stanger and the Burn, Burnsville, I'm sorry, Bloomington Police Department, Bloomington, geez, Burnsville, this is distracting. I'm not doing this again, for their support and their partnership in this process. And Chair Miller, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Brian. You, you do look fabulous, don't worry about it. All right. So yes, board members, the goal this evening was to initiate the document into our discussion. Have you, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it pre this meeting. If you have, I will now open it up for questions, or comments around it. And then as Brian indicated, it will come back for official ratification at our next meeting. So does anybody have any clarification questions or comments about the document? the document? Yes, good girl.
Thank you Chair Miller. Um, yes, this, I really want to thank, um, everyone who participated in creating and drafting this document. Brian's absolutely right. This is drastically different than anything that we've seen in the past and it really is a robust shift for us. And I appreciate all the clear definitions, um, in terms of who is responsible for what and also who isn't responsible, um, for certain parts of, of student discipline. Um, and particularly want to thank the city for their partnership. It really is a strong partnership. Uh, one thing, and I'm not necessarily suggesting a language change, but, um, looking at page 10, I just, and maybe this is an aspirational goal, maybe something to talk about for next time, but, uh, item F, as in Frank, um, we're kind of limiting ourselves. I know elsewhere in the mission of the document, we're clearly talking about students, teachers, staff and administration. Um, in terms of in-service workdays, I wonder if we're not unnecessarily limiting ourselves to simply addressing teachers and school administrators because we know that all adults in the building in our schools have an impact on our students and, um, their impression of student discipline and student behavior play, comes into play as well. So, you know, just something to think about whether for now or for next time.
Thank you for that feedback. And that is a, a note that I will make here as well as if there's others, uh, and, and give that consideration and certainly speak with our partners. And what I will do with all of these is if there's potential changes, I would bring those potentially back next meeting with both a clean copy as well as a potential red line. So you could see if we made some adjustments between now and then, uh, based on feedback. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, like I said, uh, this will come forward in the next meeting. I would like to take an opportunity to thank Brian and his, everybody that helped him here on our side, uh, to work on this. Uh, know that there's been some back and forth negotiations. I'd also like to explicitly thank, um, the city of Burnsville, uh, and, um, Chief Schwartz and her staff that worked on this. Uh, I think the, you know, what, what we're demonstrating here is that we have a partnership with our, uh, security and, and law enforcement personnel in Burnsville. We want to maintain that partnership, but we want it to be a partnership where we're working together for the benefit of students, the benefit of the security of the community, uh, the safety of everyone involved. So I think this has gone a long ways to demonstrating that. So, thank you, everybody.
Chair Miller, will you indulge me?
Yes, certainly.
To give one more, thank you.
Absolutely.
To our student board rep, Milkamay Adesu, she actually convened the representative group of students who gave feedback to Chief Tanya Schwartz and me, as well as Principal Hellkey. And the students were so excited. We planned on one meeting. I think they opened a jam board and they had a couple of meetings after that. So I did really want to thank our student representative because it was the, um, board who revamped that role to make sure it was, uh, more inclusive of other students. So wanted to thank her too.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the next section of our informational component of our meeting tonight, and that is, uh, to receive a report about the school res, uh, excuse me, receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19 related educational and public health guidance issues by the MDE and the MDH respectively. Speaker will be Dr. Dr. Battle.
Thank you Chair Miller and Directors of the Board. So tonight Bernie Bean, our lead licensed school nurse and I will share information related to health and safety, our plans to continue to monitor county COVID-19 cases, especially with the, uh, new variant and, um, share some information about surveying our families regarding secondary learning models. So first we start with the health and safety with our county update, the confirmed cases. Um, the case numbers I will share with you tonight represent confirmed cases from February 28th through 3/13/21. Dakota County today as, um, issued by Minnesota Department of Health is 40.29, which is an increase from last week of 32.19. And Scott County is 57.61, which is an increase from 49.24. Please remember, the county level data is provided to assist school districts and charter schools, but it is not intended to be the sole basis for our decision-making. It should be used along with other data points to inform our local decisions about learning models for our students. Um, I will continue to monitor the county data, data, our local 191 data and consult with our COVID-19 Advisory Committee and Regional Support Team to determine if a change in learning model is needed. Regarding our tentative plans to transition secondary from two days of in-person for those families choosing hybrid, from two days to four days later this month, we will once again monitor the data. We are planning to survey parents about this possibility, meet with our regional support team tomorrow for their consultation, and we also have a COVID-19 advisory group meeting tomorrow. Bernie Bean, our lead licensed school nurse will now share her analysis of county data and an update regarding our mitigation strategies.
Thank you Dr. Battle, Board of Directors and Chair Miller. I'm going to just start with the positivity rates. For Dakota County, this week's positivity rate is 6.9, which is an increase from 5.1. Scott County is at 8.6, which is an increase from 7.7. Minnesota's positivity rate this week is 5.4. In Minnesota, MDH reported this week that they have seen a daily increase in positive cases for the last 25 days. This past Tuesday, April 6th, they shared with us at our conference call that they had received over 400 positive cases that were investigated in either childcare or school-aged children. They also, um, shared with us that more random sampling of COVID specimens have been conducted. And in their estimation, they feel that 50 to 60% of the positive cases are due to the B117 variant in the community. The age groups for Minnesota that have been hit the hardest have been the children and their parents. For Dakota County, the seven-day average of positive reports is 176. And at our last board meeting, it was 113. Yesterday, they had one of their largest increases, which was 230 positive reports. Dakota County has seen their largest growth in numbers in the children age group 10 to 14. Now I understand those data points are concerning and, um, and need to be on our mind, but I'm also here to tell you that District 191 is doing an amazing job. Health and safety has been the foundation to what we do, and that shows. During the timeframe of the 14-day mix, which is March 14th to March 27th, health services completed 10 positive case investigations for individuals that were infectious in our building. The two-week period prior to that, we also completed 10 investigations. The next reporting period, that data, that number will decrease to five investigations that we have completed. So we did a little uptick right during, before spring break and our data this week is showing that we've gone down a little bit. It's, with the MDH information and Dakota County information, we still need to keep up our, be vigilant. We still need to keep our guard up. COVID is still there and it's those mitigation strategies that we have in place that are strong and supported by family, community, staff, that we're doing well. Vaccination continues to be that silver lining for, for us. Um, as you know, last week Dakota County started using the Metcalf site for vaccinations. And also news in the last couple of weeks is the announcement that FEMA will be conducting a vaccination clinic at the state fairgrounds. They anticipate to have 3,000 doses a day. They will be doing that seven days a week and that project will continue for eight weeks. 1,000 doses are being reserved out of the 3,000 to do outreach to community areas that have access barriers to come to the state fairground. Also new with vaccines is the Pfizer clinical studies that have been conducted for the 12 to 15-year-olds. They're very promising results of effectiveness and they are actually going to be filing an addendum to the emergency youth authorization license to have a licensed vaccine for that age group. Um, but that probably won't be until the summer. The other thing that's new this week is the guidance towards individuals that are fully vaccinated and that have been determined to be a close contact. That window of time was 90 days. They now have removed that window of time and the only, um, so a person that was fully, is fully vaccinated and is determined to be a close contact without symptoms would not need to quarantine at this time. Testing, screening continues to be one of our strongest mitigation strategies along with the vaccination. Our staff continue to have an optional screening available at their buildings every other week. Um, we did one this last Monday because we received a waiver from MDE to complete one after spring break. And then we'll go back to our regular every two weeks scheduled next week. Coming soon are plans from MDH to roll this strategy out to students. There's not a lot of detail on that yet, but they hope to start some pilot studies in our, in middle schools in Minnesota in the next couple of weeks and hope to have that rolled out, um, more for the summer programming. You know, our district, I am so impressed with what we have done. And when I talk to other neighboring, um, nurses, neighboring communities, our numbers really show our, um, dedicate, our dedication to our students, to our staff. And that partnership is strong and we just have to continue to work together. COVID is not going away yet, but we can keep it at bay by working together and being strong. Thank you.
And the last topic we'd like to share with you is at the last board meeting, Bernie and I shared, we would be taking a look at our requirement for both face shields as well as masks. And so this week we announced the phase out of timeline and I like to share that with the public. So April 5th, uh, this week, we did share with staff that face shields may be removed for outside activities. And then April 12th, we'll have another phase out, um, for our staff that they can remove their face shield while employees are at their desk workspace when a Plexiglas barrier is present. Uh, we are still going to require face shields, uh, when staff are away from their desk or workspace. And April 19th, face shields may be removed when staff are teaching, working at least six feet away from students. Face shields are required when roaming or walking within the classroom or other spaces while students are present. In the week of April 26th, face shields may be removed unless engaged in one of high-risk situations that we have shared with staff. And so we will continue to monitor. We may have to change these guidelines. Um, safety is a priority. And with that, um, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Uh, we will move to the student representative report section. Milkamay Adesu, our student representative. I assume she's on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Hello, board. Recently, Student Council has decided to create another Spirit Week for BHS students to create more of an uplifting environment. Spirit Week will include Bingo Night, Family Feud, Movie Night and Trivia. Another upcoming event is testing for both sophomores and juniors. The MCA reading test will begin next week for 10 graders and the ACT will shortly follow for juniors. And the test, um, for the ACT will be on Wednesday, April 21st. Lastly, DECA will be hosting a blood drive in May. More information on this, such as the date and how participation will look like, will be coming up soon. That is all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Milkamay. Now we will move to, uh, the superintendent report of the evening. Back to you, Dr. Battle.
Thank you Chair Miller and members of the board. Earlier this evening, we heard from, from the high school staff about the ways we are starting our ninth graders are strong in their high school experience. Tonight, I want to share a very special experience I had last month with some of those amazing ninth graders at Burnsville High School. I had the pleasure of visiting Dr. Chris Belmont's ninth grade advisory group, where I shared a little of my story, provided with, uh, this helpful advice.
Should I start again?
That's okay. Continue.
I'm good. Okay. Thank you. So I'm joining you with technical difficulties. So I had the pleasure of visiting Dr. Chris Belmont's ninth grade advisory group. I gave some helpful advice, I hope, as they consider their futures and answered some questions. As always, when I visit our students at any level, I was inspired by their thoughtfulness, their insight and their curiosity. As a thank you, they wrote a poem and sent it to me. They had written together. And in the poem, the students explore and celebrate their individual identities, what makes them unique and what's important to them while also finding their commonalities. I'm not going to read the entire poem tonight, but I want to share the passage. "We are from trees and quiet roads, the reminder of my family and how much I love them. Mixed colors and church on Easter. We are laughable kids playing with each other. The memories of what our family looked like back then. Malawa and rice. I will always love you and you are in my heart. We are from Juneteenth. Chi bu rekki, rice, praying five times per day. Lefsa, butter, sugar and cinnamon. We are from old raggedy infested. Go to your room and I love you. Good soul food, non-stop laughter." And so you see why we are so focused on ninth grade success from these amazing students. And so I'm absolutely awestruck by how perfectly this poem represents the promise of being community strong. We celebrate each other for who we are, unique individuals together. 191. Thank you Chair and members of the board.
Thank you. Not sure how the board member reports are going to follow that, but, um, maybe we can, uh, get that, uh, described on a poster or something, you know, hanging in the high school. Um, all right. So now we will move to the board member report section of the evening. Uh, again, this is, uh, not committee reports, but individual actions, uh, by board members that you'd like to report on, uh, in your assignments to schools or other, uh, activities. Anybody have any reports to give this evening? All right. Not seeing any. Uh, we will move now to, um, the next section of our, uh, leaving the information section of our meeting, we will move into the business meeting component of, uh, tonight, beginning with our consent agenda. Although board action is required and is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items, in the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Does anybody, uh, have a desire to remove anything from the consent agenda for separate consideration? I'm not hearing any. I then will, uh, take a motion for, to approve the consent, uh, agenda for the evening. Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Webb, uh, Director Og. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Alt.
Aye.
Said.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Chester.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
Werb.
Aye.
Okay. We will now move to, uh, new business of the evening, um, beginning with, um, a set of, uh, actions this evening brought forward by Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Human Resources. The first will be to adopt a resolution relating to the termination of teaching contracts for named long-term substitute teachers effective the closing of the 2020- the closing of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Director Solvine.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Each spring, we have a number of items that we bring before the board. Some of them are housekeeping in nature. This first item that we're going to be addressing is, is one of those items. This is releasing formally our long-term subs. Long-term subs will sign on with us for an assignment anywhere between thirty days up to the, the balance of a school year, depending on the needs of the person in which they're, they're filling in for. And we really appreciate the folks who are willing to take these assignments. Some of them take multiple assignments throughout the year. We do appreciate their service to the district, to the community, and especially to our students for filling in and providing that professional continuation of, of service and instruction. So the first group of folks that we will be discussing here is a resolution to terminate teaching contracts for long-term subs at the, effective at the end of the year. And if it's all right with you, I'll go ahead and read the recommendation. Okay. It is the recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution. Be resolved by the Board of Education of School District one ninety-one that the teaching contracts of the following long-term substitute teachers be terminated at the close of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Be a further resolved that written notices sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law.
All right, I am looking for a motion for, for the action in front of us. Moved by Director Hume. I need a second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Director Webb. Any questions on the motion in front of us? Seeing on, I will ask Ms. Kenny to take the call, please, roll call.
Said.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Chester.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
Werb.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Okay, and the motion passes. Then on to the next motion. Again, we will be with Stacy Solvine. Adopt a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of that portion of teaching contracts in excess of one point zero and or beyond contractual right at the conclusion of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Stacy.
Thank you. Each year, we have a number of positions that we need to share between buildings. A F I A D position that we don't have enough sections at the high school and we don't have enough sections at the, one of the middle schools. So we will have a teacher who travels between the two sites. If that assignment does not allow the teacher to have their contractual amount of prep minutes, we compensate for that time and that would be added on to their contract. Each spring, we go through this process to reduce the teacher back to their original contract, whether it's a one point oh or if there are a point, less than a one point oh, whatever may have needed to be added to their assignment to fulfill their obligation to be able to travel. So with that, it is the, my recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution. Be resolved by the Board of Education of Independent School District one ninety-one that the portion of teaching contracts of staff in excess of one point oh and or contractual rights be terminated at the close of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Be a further resolved that written notices sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law.
All right, I need a motion then for the action in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Werb and a second. Seconded by Director Connor. Well, Ms. Kenny, please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Chester.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
Werb.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Said.
Aye.
And the motion passes. The next item on our agenda is to adopt a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts of probationary certified personnel at the close of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Again, Director Solvine.
Each year also, we do bring before you a list of probationary teachers that we are releasing. Typically, that can be the result of a number of different reasons. Sometimes it's around performance. Sometimes it's around, we no, no, no longer need the same amount of teachers in a specific licensure area, so we may reduce staff. This year, as in some of the other years, we have a declining enrollment, so we are responding to maintaining our class sizes, which means we will need to release probationary staff. And this year, we also had close to eleven F T Es that we needed to add due to our multiple models of instruction that we had to provide due to Covid, specifically our virtual academy. So with that, we are also releasing those probationary teachers that we hired to help us get through this Covid year. So with that, it is the recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution. Be resolved by the Board of Education of Independent School District one ninety-one pursuant to Minnesota statutes one twenty-two eight dot four oh that the teaching contracts of the following licensed probationary teachers in Independent School District one ninety-one be terminated at the end of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Be a further resolved that written notices sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law.
All right, I'll take a motion for the action in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Director Said. Ms. Kenny, we please, oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'll open up for, if there is any questions. Yes, I'm sorry.
This is the part of the evening that is always challenging for me because while this action is necessary, releasing good quality teachers is not easy. And because of declining enrollment, we are, I'm, I know in the mix, we are losing some good teachers. And so this, this action item followed by the following action item, while I will support, it is with a heavy heart that, that we find ourselves in this situation.
Any other commentary? Thank you. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Chester.
Aye.
Connor. Hume.
Aye.
Werb.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Said.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
And now we will move to the next item to adopt the resolution proposing to place continuing contract teachers on unrequested leave of absence effective at the conclusion of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Director Solvine.
The difference between this action or this recommendation and the one that we previously completed, teachers who are placed upon an unrequested leave of absence are teachers who have completed their probationary period, which means they've completed at least three years consecutively in one district and have started and was renewed for a contract for a fourth year. Under our contract, probationary staff need to be released prior to moving into U L A's. The, this U L A, these U L A's are the result specifically of rightsizing for reduced enrollment and for no other reason. It's because of our budgetary needs and our class sizes. It is hard to lose talented staff when we're releasing probationary teacher, teachers. It's extremely difficult releasing teachers who have cheap tenure and have worked in the district for a number of years and who have demonstrated success here as well. With that, it is the recommendation that the Board of Education adopt resolution, resolution proposing to place the following continuing con, contract teachers on unrequested leave of absence effective at the conclusion of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Be resolved by the Board of Education, School District one ninety-one as follows. That it is proposed that the teachers of said school district be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits effective at the end of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year on June eleventh, twenty twenty-one pursuant to Minnesota statute one twenty-two eight dot four oh. That written notice will be sent to said teachers regarding the proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits as provided by law, and said notice shall include notice of right to hearing if requested and be in substantially the form of the attached letter.
I will take a motion for the action in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume. Seconded, please.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werb. Any comments on this action, this motion? Done. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Connor.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
Werb.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Said.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Chester.
Aye.
And then next in our business component of our meeting tonight to approve casual wage change, this time again with Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Bringing to your recommendation to approve an update to our casual wage scale, we have actually had to approve of, to approve updates to this now twice this year. The last one that we did was back in September, September tenth was the updated version on the, on the draft. Excuse me, on the draft that you were provided, it reflects the adding of the Covid health liaison for the Department of Health as well as tennis site supervision and the removal of some other areas. Also, at this point, we are asking to take a substantial increase to our food and nutritional service subs. Part of the reason is, again, stemming back to the different programming that we're having to provide with Covid, the different needs of absences that folks have taken on a full-time basis for the rest of the, of this year. And the multiple, and as I said, the multiple programming that we're doing at this point in time. We are not trying to fill the positions with permanent replacements. Like I said, we do anticipate a large number of our folks returning next fall. However, at the eleven ten rate, we are not attracting anybody to fill in for two to four, four and a half hours on a daily basis to provide meals. And we need to be able to compete, we need to be able to compete with McDonald's and, you know, your fast food chains on a lot of this for the, the type of positions that we're hoping to fill here. Earlier this year, just to point out, when we went full distance learning between Thanksgiving and through the end of the winter break, we were able to consolidate a lot of our food service staff so that we could provide either curbside pickup or home delivery, but we weren't serving students in person. So we had to, at that point in time, ironically, release some probationary staff and furlough others. We did bring those staff back when our students started to return in January. And as we continue to bring more students back in-house and still are providing these other services, that is where we're finding our pinch point. So we're asking that we increase our rate to thirteen fifty, especially for the rest of the spring to try to round out our staffing. Just as another point of reference, in a kitchen, you can have two or three people in a kitchen at our elementary buildings and far more at the high school in, in close contact throughout that period of time while they're preparing and serving the meals and it, it is possible at the different points that we could lose a kitchen. So that is why we also need to make sure that we have a substantial subpool in place to be able to backfill so that we don't disrupt our educational process. So with that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approves the following rates of pay for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Specifically, we're increasing the food and nutritional services subrates to thirteen fifty.
All right.
So moved.
Moved by Director. Second on the item in front of us.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Is there any questions or comments about the motion in front of us?
I was just wondering if some of those services can't be done by volunteers or is it maybe a Department of Health type of thing?
We have sought to, to be able to partner in some areas for volunteers, but as far as, and that would be on the delivery component, but the preparation of food falls specifically to our union for food services. And as you're also mentioning, there is certification that the, the individuals who do work in our kitchens need to go through to be qualified to, to provide the meals.
Thank you.
Director Alt, did you have a question? Additional questions or comments? Seeing on, I will ask Ms. Kenny to call the roll, please.
Hume.
Aye.
Werb.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Said.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Chester.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. That concludes the business component of tonight's meeting. We are going to move to a workshop at this time. Beginning with a discussion around insurance. We'll be back to Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Again, thank you, Chair Miller. I am going to introduce Chase Ambrosia from One Digital. He is our broker and has been our broker and assistant, quite frankly, invaluable assistants over the past few years as we have been working with a self-funded program for our health insurance and supporting the ongoing success of our self-funded dental insurance plan as well. Typically, what happens in the spring, we have a workshop to bring the board up to speed with our usage, the claims, the, the recommendation that we'll be bringing to our next meeting as far as proposed increases in our rates. Allow you an opportunity to ask questions regarding that. But to give you a little bit of background on this as well, we have a benefits committee that is made up of the different bargaining units that meets on a monthly basis throughout the year. Chase meets with them for, I think it's an hour to an hour and a half to review all of the numbers, the claims, the projected increases that we have, where, where, where the numbers are, if you will. And, and also to start mapping out different ideas on strategies for preventative care, for ways in which we might look to save money to our, our health insurance plan. Again, this is our plan, you know, Health Partners, Medica, Preferred One. No one else is taking away the good year when we have a good year. That money comes back to the district and, and it's in a reserve fund, a special fund, committed fund that we, we are able to kind of bank the good years to help offset those years that aren't so good. And what our hope is, is that our service is not being purchased, bought with unreasonable low rates only to have Only to have a two digit increase when our contract expires. And we have been able to successfully do that over the last six, seven years now while we've been self funded. Our increases have ranged anywhere between. Well, roughly three to five, five and a half percent each year max. And they're slow, they're low, they're steady, they're predictable. But we haven't had like we did our first two years when we went into the plan, a fourteen and a sixteen percent increase. Or even higher projections that were brought to us from other. Healthcare providers, so I'm going to turn this over to Chase to let him kind of walk you through what a monthly meeting looks like. We have a lot of new folks here on the board. With different experiences already and I would just like you to pick Chase's brain on this and understand what he's presenting. And what our benefit committees sees each month, so that when we bring our proposal next month, you'll, you'll be fully informed and ready to go. With that Chase, I'll turn it over to you.
Perfect, thank you Stacy and good evening everybody. I believe, is it okay if I go ahead and share my screen as we kind of walk through some of these materials? Okay. All right, so you should be able to see my screen and this is, you know, the typical material that we review on a monthly basis to, you know, condense the information. To be concise with the committee and to give them a realistic snapshot as to what we're looking at. Without being overly invasive as to specific high cases or ongoings that are adversity. For the plan and an expense to the district. One thing that we have modeled in the last couple of years is, is kind of looking at our average trend in addition to benchmark trend. Because now that the district has been self insured for more than a few years and we've been able to really stabilize this thing. Build sufficient reserves so that, you know, we can take the lump when it happens and, and still be able to get through. With the single digit increases and not have to have the adversity of double digits. Hopefully ever again, because that impacts everybody, obviously the district expense, but more importantly employees and their pocketbooks. So that is something that we're trying to be conscious of as we continue to maintain the stability of the self insured plan. This is what I would call our typical self funded calc page. Where we're comparing the district's current contract to our renewal underwriting with some assumptions. We have our counts with our total enrollment and then our belly button, so our membership. We have our contract below that, which is a twelve eighteen contract, so our claims are incurred in twelve months. But we have an additional six months of runout that we need to factor in. In the plan, in the event that the plan was ever to dissolve, but also for claims that are incurred towards the end of the plan year, but not yet processed and paid. We have our specific deductible, which is that two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Where the district is on the hook for all health insurance claims up to that threshold for all twenty six hundred members that are on the plan. We pay a fixed cost portion of that premium to cover that stop loss gap. And that is some of our guaranteed spent money. As it stands right now, based on the average counts, this is roughly a million dollars. We pay an additional ten thousand dollars for our aggregate liability insurance and this really protects the bottom line. In the event that we were to have that worst case scenario and exceed what we would consider normal utilization. And go beyond our liabilities, that's a mere ten thousand dollars, but a very important aspect of the insurance program. Below that, we have our administrative fixed costs and in total, we pay about one point five, almost one point six million dollars. Of guaranteed spent money for our stop loss insurance and our administrative fixed cost. Below that is what we would call our expected liability. So Preferred One and the reinsurance have estimated that the expected claims for this current plan year are to be around seventeen point three. Almost seventeen point four million. One thing that we were able to leverage when going self insured right away was having a twelve percent corridor. Versus what is an industry tan, a standard of twenty five percent or twenty percent more applicable to a group year size. So this really limits that worst case scenario for the district, but something that we want to be cognizant of and keep in mind. I'm just going to move this a little bit so I can see the bottom portion of my screen. When we get to the total of this, our grand total expected. Fixed cost plus our expected liabilities comes out to that eighteen point nine, almost nineteen million. This middle portion is where the district is currently funding. Something that I want to point out is that we are actually funding slightly below our expected cost. This is typically a no no, especially in the private sector. But one of the beautiful things that, you know, public municipalities and public entities have the ability to do is build reserve. So we know that we have built up good reserve and we're leveraging some of that reserve so that we can accommodate and keep increases. Fair and equitable. This bottom number is our worst case scenario. That would be if everybody on the plan were to be a two hundred and twenty five thousand dollar spec kit. Or if we were to have excessive utilization, that would exceed an overall spend of twenty one million dollars. This right hand side is where we have our assumptions. So for our fixed cost assumption increase on the stop loss insurance, normally we'd have about fifteen percent or sixteen percent. Because that would be considered leveraged trend. For this year's renewal and based on the high cases that have played out, we're using twenty five percent because that is our rate cap. For this upcoming renewal and we are likely to get that, in fact, we just got it today. Because we have excessive high cases occurring on the plan where the stop loss has exceeded by almost a million dollars at this point. We have factored in a three percent admin increase, but that is under, you know, contract for at least another year. The likely two years until we do another hit a bid. So overall, we know that the guaranteed fixed cost is going to go up roughly sixteen percent. Based on our underwriting projections of just your net claims, you know, we expect the fixed cost to go up. Roughly two and a half percent, it's likely to be a little bit more based on the March claims that just came out. When we get to the bottom, this middle portion is really the number that we like the committee to focus on. Because this provides our average renewal projection based on the most recent claims for the given plan year. Plus blending with the two previous plan years. I also want to point out that we've looked at two different models the last couple of years. So this is what I would call our standard ten percent trend model with reflecting this projection. And then we've looked at what the district's average trend has been over the last five plus years plus this current year. To really kind of look at that as a renewal projection as well. So in our standard trend model, it's about five point two four percent. Looking at kind of our underwriting sheet where we do look at your net claims. One of the things that we like to focus on is, you know, where are some of these benchmarks? So one thing that has been noticeable is that we've had a decline in enrollment. That decline in enrollment hasn't necessarily declined the overall risk of the plan. And that's something that we need to be very keen on moving forward if we expect enrollment to continue to decline. Are we, you know, removing bad risks from the plan or are we removing good risk and the bad risk is still staying on the plan? So those are some of the outliers that, you know, have played out these last couple of years and will continue to play out. To make sure that we can keep this appropriately funded, but again, not get too far under what our expected costs are. For the stop loss contract. We use an appropriate blend, we use the three year blend and we mature to the current year as we get further in to the plan year. So with eight months of claims through February, this is showing a sixty seven percent blend to the current year. With March claims, that would bump them to seventy five and typically I would cap at a seventy or seventy five percent for the current year. So there, we're not overlooking too much into a good scenario or overlooking too much into a bad scenario for the current plan year. Looking at our average trend model, same numbers on this left hand side. But on the right hand side, you can see that using our average trend over the last five full plan years. Plus the current plan year, that that renewal projection is reflecting a decrease of minus one point eight seven. Now, because I had to provide this information to you or last week before the deadline. I was not able to update with the claims that were recently released yesterday. There was a very big impact to the March claims that affected these numbers by about five percent. So in the previous model, that five percent increase moved up to nine percent. And in this average trend model, the increase has bumped up to about three point three percent. So I do want to mention that, but I, I'm not able to show it to you because we just received the claim information. Our average trend, we do have a half percent, half a percent of margin in there. But again, we've had a favorable trend model since going self insured. Where the district's trend on claims has been about four percent. And that is why we're looking at this number now, because we're mature into self funding. We can balance this between what industry trend is, which is technically now above ten percent. But also what the district's trend is based on their own experience and their own credibility. The second half portion of what we look at is the tracking. And I'll zoom in a little bit better so people can see. But this is kind of how we break this down box by box for the folks that are on the committee. To help understand how we're looking from a claims experience standpoint to our funding, to our reserve, but also where the high cases are at. So with claims through February, to our contract, we were running at sixty nine percent. So favorable, but as I mentioned, March was a pretty hefty month and that jumped up to seventy six percent. In the reserve column, you can see that we've built up a total of nine hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars through February. But for this month of March, we had a six hundred and sixty six thousand dollar deficit. So while the reserve that we built up is good and we want to use that to be able to stabilize the plan. We know that there can be big swings when we are dealing with adversity, specifically with high cases in utilization. We all know that this last year has been extremely unique with the pandemic. And where there would be anticipated less utilization, there was increased utilization in Covid cost. Related to individuals that have been affected by Covid, but also testing. Now, we know testing is covered by the federal government, but what the federal government is not covering is the administrative costs. To provide that test or any additional testing unrelated to Covid. And that has been quite of an expense for the district, along with any, many other districts and other self insured employers. So that is something that, you know, wasn't as much of an offset as we would have liked, knowing that utilization. Typically should be down with what was experienced in this last year plus with the pandemic. Our high cases is on the left hand side and you can see that we do have some ongoing situations. And some one and dones, but for the most part, we, we have had significant high cases hit the plan this year. There are a few more that popped up with the March numbers and the amount over stop loss has exceeded. More than what we're looking at in this report. So I, I do want to be cognizant that we've taken a little bit of a hit here. But at the same time, as Stacy's mentioned, we've tried to optimize this plan and create efficiencies. And we have gone after pharmacy rebates and, you know, that is a future offset if we're not able to build reserve like we've had. So we've taken the good with the bad, but overall, one thing that we've really done a good job is trying to leverage the stop loss contract. To benefit the district and to help build that reserve. And, and by contrast, a number that I do want to share with you to kind of help resonate that. Is if, if we go back to two thousand fifteen, so looking at the last five full plan years in this current plan year. Through nine months, the district has paid about five point five million dollars in stop loss premium. The amount of claims that have gone over the two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars spec deductible. And gone against the reinsurance of our contract is a little over eight point two million. The difference of that is almost two, it's, it's two point seven million. So that is essentially, you know, two point seven million that has helped us build this reserve. Because we haven't essentially taken a gouge in our fixed cost of the self insured plan. And, and really had our, our stop loss premium increase significantly. So we benefited from these rate caps when we've gone through adversity. We're doing that this year as well, because as I mentioned, we're paying about a million dollars for that stop loss premium. But as it stands through March claims, the amount of claims that have gone over the two twenty five is that one point eight million. So we know that stop loss has taken a hit most of the years that the district has been self insured. And that's not always going to be the case, so we almost need to prepare to have an experience that fixed cost may go up. Even with marketing efforts, we will take the best deal that we can get. But we just need to be very careful about the decline in enrollment and ongoing health risk. That may be subject to increased utilization and or high cases moving forward. To put it into perspective a little bit, I do want to show last year as an example. In terms of, you know, kind of the lengthy list of high cases that the plan has experienced. The way that we track this is that we look at any high case that has gone over fifty percent of that spec deductible. Which is two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So, you know, I, I would say that we've done a very good job to manage this, to help build reserve when needed. But more importantly, to help build reserve by the contracts that we've been able to receive. To offset some of the bad experience that has actually played out based on, you know, the overall risk to the plan. And last year's a good example is where we basically ran the plan at a hundred percent of funding. And that's essentially kind of the position that we're in, we're not necessarily looking to build up excessive reserve. But we don't have a crystal ball as to how the experience is going to play out. But what I do know is that we do have some ongoing high cases that are going to play into this next plan year. And with the uncertainties of this pandemic, I would expect the same amount of Covid costs. As what we experienced in these last twelve plus months, but we know that there is going to be some Covid costs related. And there's a lot of uncertainty for these next couple of years. So we do want to take a little bit more of a conservative approach with these funding recommendations. And really try to maintain stability as much as possible for the plan, but also for the premium increases to employees. One last note of clarification that I want to share with the new folks that are on the committee. So as I mentioned, the, the stop loss contract is a twelve eighteen. But the way that we track this is we almost track it like it's on a paid basis. So we're tracking your current plan year of claims, but we're also tracking the runout from the previous contract into this current year tracking. And for me, that gives us a sense of real time as to what's occurring with your risk based on your claims in this current plan year. But also the tail of the runout from the previous plan year. And it does give us a more realistic renewal projection, because we're looking at it in real time. Versus shortchanging what the runout may be from the previous contract and not factoring in when we need to make renewal decisions. You know, typically at this point in time of year. So with that, you know, I do want to pause and see if anybody has any questions before we move on to dental. So that I can provide clarity as to what I have gone through.
I'll say at this point, let's, let's open it up for any clarification questions. And then we'll loop back for a deeper discussion since we're in a workshop environment, be ample time for that. So are there any clarification questions on the data that was presented at this point? All right, we have no desire for clarification questions at this time, so you move toward to the Delta or the dental component.
Dental. Everybody loves to talk about dental, including Stacy. The dental program, you know, there's really not a lot of a concern with the dental, you know, there is sufficient reserve. You know, I, I would say kind of the biggest thing is, is getting people to go in for preventative services and, and utilizing the dental benefit. To the extent for their health. It has been noticeable when we've looked at information from the current carrier Delta. That there is a significant underutilization, especially as it relates to preventative services. And as with most of the school districts that are self insured, they do have sufficient reserve. And it's not because the plan is overfunded, it's more or less because the plan is underutilized. If you were to compare by contrast, your dental benefit to a fully insured plan, the rates would be higher. So we're really not looking to have big swings with the dental, really just looking to take very small nominal increases to keep. Stability and to, to maintain so that if usage does catch up. We don't have to have a big swing and an adjustment to the overall dental premiums. Our underwriting based on the last two full plan years in the current year is recommending a two percent increase. Delta provides us an equivalency mid contract evaluation that we use by comparison, but we do not actually recommend. Because we don't want it to undercut or, or an employer to undercut their self insured dental program. And have that be an expense to them versus appropriately funded. But it is a good benchmark and it does actually fall in line with our underwriting based on what we've tracked. For the two previous plan years and the current plan year. This is just kind of reflective of that, but the one thing, you know, that I will mention. Is we all know that we couldn't go to the dentist for about four or five months last. Uh, but the one thing, you know, that I will mention is we all know that we couldn't go to the dentist for about four or five months last year. So there was a pretty significant decrease in the average claims per employee. That has actually been made up for the most part this year. Um, as with most employers where we've seen people that couldn't go in for those services previously are trying to make up for those services. So we are anticipating, uh, more utilization for the remainder of this plan year. And going into the next plan year as people come out of this pandemic in terms of trying to presume their normal healthcare needs. Whether that's medical related or dental related. So even though that our underwriting projection is reflecting a, a 2% increase, we are certainly not recommending that that is needed. Um, but I think we're looking at something, you know, in the half of percentile or quarter percentile, just to do something versus nothing. Um, because we don't want big swings, as I mentioned. Looking at the current year tracking, um, the plan is running at a slight deficit. Um, I would imagine that we will have a couple more surplus months, but then deficit month as we get to the end of the plan year. When people are more inclined to use the dental benefit. Um, with school, you know, coming to a closure on summer beginning, you know, there's typically, uh, ebbs and flows with school districts. And how the population likes to use the dental benefit. Uh, and it's been very noticeable and it's something that we expect to see for the remainder of this plan year. So no concerns with this deficit whatsoever. Uh, but by contrast, to show what occurred last year, when, you know, folks were not able to go into the dental office. Uh, for that period of time unless it was an emergency basis. You can see that, you know, we over excessively built reserve and not by, um, purpose. But really, you know, by chance because of the pandemic. So dental is completely fine. Um, we've encouraged people to do preventative services on both medical and dental. Uh, we want to continue to show information to the group on how they can share, uh, this information with their group. And where are some of the triggers? And know that it's not just employees, but it's also the dependent spouses and the dependent children on the plan. Um, that, you know, make up this benefit and the usage. And we want to make sure everybody can use it to the full extent and maintain, you know, good oral health. Uh, when it comes to dental, but also, uh, good medical health, uh, for them and their family. So with that, um, the last thing that I will jump to is the report that I shared. And this is kind of going back to the medical, um, but this is, you know, a platform that we use called Springbook. Um, it provides analytics and algorithms. Um, it's kind of a, a good secondary baseline to know what's occurring within the plan. And what are some of the things that, you know, we may want to focus on? So we know that, um, based on the rolling 12 information, so this is not following our plan year. This is February 20 to January 21, our rolling 12 spend was 17.3, almost 17.4 million. Um, previously it was 18.1 million. Uh, the forecasted you can see is slightly higher than both of those figures. And that's, you know, kind of the thing in my head that we need to be cognizant of. Knowing that our projections are going up when our enrollment is going down. So we can't necessarily underfund when we know that costs are going to go up based on some of the reporting that we're seeing. Um, some of the factors that we want to be careful and, and try to have an approach with. Um, specifically is musculoskeletal. So we know that, uh, again, with most school districts, we have an aging population. And people will need to have the knees, hips and shoulder surgeries done. And statistically, people are having those done at an earlier age in life and the recovery is much quicker. But it is a significant expense. So we've tried to align some providers as well as recommendations to provide a more cost effective outlet. To folks within the plan, um, that would be a, a lower cost option to them based on their liabilities. But also a savings to the plan from what that total expense could be. Um, another one, mental health is, is something that we know is prevalent based on what we've experienced in this last year. Um, and something that else is needing to be addressed. Uh, and we are recommending the EAP services and other outlets for folks, uh, so that those needs can be met. But it's, it's something that has been noticeable, not only in this experience, but experience with other clients. Um, pharmaceutical spend is another thing that we've tried to have end roads with and encourage folks to. Use some of the resources with the current carrier to look for their prescription drugs at the lowest net cost. Um, one of the difficulties with a very favorable plan design is that there isn't a lot of member liability. Um, so there isn't that consumerism factor, uh, as if there were a high deductible or no copays when it comes to prescription drugs. So we've tried to encourage people to take advantage of this tool, look at outlets, knowing that what they don't pay, the plan pays. Uh, and we know that there could be some improvements in this medical spend or the pharmacy spend. Um, if people were to go to the more cost effective pharmacies. Um, what I wanted to show here i- is kind of the makeup of, of what we're dealing with in this roaming 12. So not only does the district try to provide great insurance for the employees, but also their families. And we know that that's one of the great benefits in working for a school district is having favorable insurance. Uh, and this really provides a good shot, a snapshot as to where the costs lie. And to know that it's not just employees that are driving our cost, but it's also dependent spouses and it's also dependent children. And that can vary month to month, but we want to be sensitive to, uh, situations, especially when it comes to children. You know, knowing that is the very reason why we have insurance and we want to do everything possible for these outcomes to put people in a better position. To resume their normal life, uh, and to lead a healthy life. Um, so this gives you kind of a, a little snapshot as to where our experience has been incurred over these last 12 months. Again, looking at February 20 to January 21. This back page of this report, um, you know, goes into some of the breakdown of the spend and our turnover rate. So of the medical spend in this rolling 12 scenario, it was 13.3 million. Our pharmacy spend is a little over 4 million. That is one of the very reasons why we went after pharmacy rebates a couple of years ago. Because we knew the district had appropriate spend and this is something that we could leverage. And it made sense to have this money come back to the district versus profiting in insurance carrier. One thing that we did most recently in this renewal scenario is leverage that even more to optimize the rebate value for the district. But to also show that there's additional things that can be done if it makes sense. And we have agreement from the committee to pursue those avenues of cost savings when it comes to the pharmacy spend. Uh, the turnover rate, you know, that is something that has actually dropped a little bit. Um, but again, something that we want to look at because if we have a higher turnover rate. We don't necessarily know what that influx of good risk is versus bad risk. And it can vary more significantly year to year. So the lower turnover rate they had, we have, the more predictability, uh, we have with the risk as well. Um, when it comes to, you know, these graphs at the bottom, it's more, more or less showing, you know, where our source of care of spend is occurring. Um, so outpatient services and inpatient services have been significant in this rolling 12 scenario. But when it comes to actual visits, um, outpatient by far outnumbers. Uh, a lot of this could be attributed to some of the COVID testing that was done, uh, in, in office visits in clinics, et cetera. Um, so, you know, I would say that this number is probably higher than it typically would based on a visit count standpoint. Um, when it comes to preventative gaps in care, uh, this is where we know that there needs to be outreach, not just to employees. But to the entire family in making sure that people go back in and start to presume preventative services. Because what can be caught today may prevent that significant scenario tomorrow. Um, and it's something that we want people to get back on track on because it's not just you, it's not just, uh, employers in the state of Minnesota. It's nationwide where we've seen a huge decline in preventative services, not only for adults, but specifically children in their well child visits. Um, when it comes to, uh, chronic condition gaps in care, uh, again, more of a focus with employees. Knowing that, you know, these are the folks that are taking the insurance. Um, these are the folks needing it the most, whether it's single coverage or for family coverage. Uh, but they seem to be the ones that are the least adherent when it comes to managing chronic conditions. And we know that diabetes is a factor, heart disease is a factor, and those are really the two most prevalent. Chronic conditions in your population, but almost consistently across the board with most populations. So having visibility to this is, is able to provide us more insights to the group. Without getting specific onto individual scenarios or talking about specific high case situations. But also puts some perspective as to what sort of information they should share with their group. And how we can improve the health of the overall population together. So with that, you know, I will definitely open it up for questions and clarifications, um, and anything else that you guys need.
All right. Thank you, Chase. Um, group, I'm gonna just recommend, you know, remind everybody we're in a workshop environment. So, um, it'll be more casual, feel free to jump in with questions. Um, now's the time to ask anything, um, in depth, if you'd like to know more about what Chase presented on.
Um, thank you, Chase. That was, um, really great information and you really break it down, um, very well. Um, this question might be for Stacy and just for my reference and just knowledge since I'm a rookie here. Um, how, um, how long or were we using this, um, the broker or preferred one with the district?
I, I, I missed that last part. How long have we, we've been using preferred one? Is that for stop loss?
Yeah, I thought, yeah.
I think five of the seven years, four or five years. That we've been self funded.
Thank you.
Yep.
I was just curious, why is the out of network cost the same as in network?
On the plan design?
Yeah, on the plan, not the dental, on the medical.
The medical, you know, that is, is obviously, you know, it's a negotiated benefit. Um, so when, when it comes to making those sort of adjustments, um, we need agreement from all bargaining groups. Otherwise there would be an aggregate value change. So, you know, i- i- it's an unlikely occurrence that we're going to have significant out of network claims here in the state of Minnesota. And, and most of the nation based off the national network that's used, but it is a possibility. Um, but if we were to change that, you know, that would be an aggregate value change. And we would need an MOU or an agreement from the bargaining groups to adjust the out of network benefits.
Well, thank you. Do you have data on like how, how much utilization there is outside of Minnesota?
I could get that information. Um, there very, there is very little, uh, you know, at least in the top 25 provider report. I don't think there's anybody, uh, or any providers that are outstate. Um, but we do know with dependents possibly being in college or outstate, uh, that there is a potential for utilization to occur outside the state of Minnesota. And, you know, one of the very reasons why we wanted to make sure that we had a sufficient national network. Um, for care that could be received outside the state of Minnesota.
What about, uh, provider discounts?
Provider discounts, um, you know, that is something that I would say is subjective, uh, based on the carriers in our market. Um, we've done, you know, discount analysis in the past and, you know, know that things fall within a range. But also do starting costs in terms of how carriers reflect their discounts. Um, we know based on the location of where the district is. And the proximity of the hospitals most nearest to the district. It aligns with, you know, where the TPA arrangements are. Um, but at the same time, you know, that's why we do the official bids. And we go to market and we allow others to bid on the business. And, you know, make a judgment call as to what would be the best move for the district. Um, at any given renewal, especially when it comes to the hit of bids.
So in the cost of the, what we're seeing, does that reflect, um, discounts for? I mean, how, is there breakdown of as far as like discounts with preferred one? I mean, do you get?
Preferred ones.
Is there any discounted rates with preferred one as far as provider discounts?
Yes, preferred one, you know, has discounts like all the carriers in our market, you know, and they provide that in their reporting package. Um, to, to, you know, I got show what their discounts are based off of the utilization that has been incurred.
All right, any just one question?
Just a comment. I, I think, um, one takeaway for me from tonight is are the hidden strings of declining enrollment. And, um, insurance clearly, um, is one of them. So, uh, thank you very much for calling that out, Chase. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And I think, you know, Chase, you did a good job bringing it up continuously through the presentation. But I suspect the impact of COVID and what it's done to our habits and our abilities and such is probably going to be longer term. And we'll see that roll out over time.
Uh, yes, it.
Go ahead, Luke.
Um, you know, one thing I can share based on the COVID report that we last looked at. Um, since the inception, inception of the pandemic, you know, there has been about. It was over 800,000, probably closer to $900,000 in COVID related expense. So that was, you know, testing related to office visits and additional tests within those visits. But also, um, the positive folks and any healthcare that they needed, uh, based on that positive result. I, I believe there was a few folks that did have hospitalizations as well. Um, but again, where most people thought there'd be an offset with lower utilization. It was somewhat made up, uh, by the excessive COVID testing and impact, uh, that had to, to most health plans. Um, one thing that I do want to point out as well, that there's been a lot of legislative changes with this pandemic. And there is, um, you know, risk to the plan moving forward, especially with some of the things related to COBA, Cobra. And the Cobra subsidy that was most recently passed, where, you know, somebody who was involuntarily termed within the last 18 months. Has the ability to, uh, take advantage of this Cobra, Cobra subsidy that will be provided from April to September. Um, and, and, you know, if we did have a situation where an individual came back on the plan. The district could be recouped the premium cost by the federal government. But not the expense of that individual on the self insured plan. So we have exposure that could occur based on some of these legislative passings. Uh, that could impact all employers, but more specifically self insured employers and the risk that this means to you, the district.
Any other questions or comments, clarifications? Stacy, I'd ask, uh, this is a workshop environment and I know that we were intention here was to get, get a, a report. Um, is there anything you need, uh, although we're not able to make, uh, direct, or decisions, but any direction or anything you need from us? Or what, um, what are kind of some next steps around this?
Certainly. Um, next steps, um, Chase will continue to work with the benefits committee. I believe they have another meeting scheduled prior to our next board meeting. I believe so. And we will be bringing to you a recommendation for our rate increases for our, um, next year's plan year, beginning July 1st, 2021. We just provide you the background information during this workshop. Hopefully answer ahead of time, any questions that you may have, give you a feel of. What the benefits committee sees on a monthly basis. Um, they're very engaged as far as following the numbers, tracking the high cases, how that's impacting our stop loss, et cetera. So, um, also just a side note, so that you're aware, we are not passive in our healthcare. Um, we have looked at, we are using a, another service, it's called Amplify. That supplements our, our medical plan. These are doctors that are outside of networks who are, have, uh, worked with us to provide discounted rates. Uh, for a number of different services. Some high priced services such as, you know, the, the 50 year old, uh, checkup for everybody to be, uh, to. Be subtle with that. Um, uh, Twin Cities Orthopedics has helped us. There are a number of different ways in which we are looking to keep our costs down. Uh, we are moving into the, the pharmaceutical rebates and. You, this is our second year with that. Not only are we looking at that, but now we're starting to explore. Okay, so how do we even modify behavior within those pharmaceutical rebates going forward? How do we help folks, um, change some of the practices, still have high quality healthcare? But at lower cost and in a way that's more manageable. So we are constantly looking for ways in which we can save money for our plan. This is not the district's plan, this is not a health insurance provider's plan. This is our plan. Each of our employees and our family members, um, has an inherent investment in this plan. And the success of it in the long run. Um, and I think we can be very proud at the health, uh, the, the, the overall health of our plan. As well as the services that are provided under it. So I want to. So I want to thank Chase, One Digital, and the partners that we work with to make that happen.
Yes, thank you.
One, just one final comment too in regards to, you know, transparency. You know, one thing that I always try to tell anybody that's new to the committee is that I am going to do the best job that I can to get us the best stop-loss contract, but I'm also going to be realistic into where we should actually be funding this program. And while it's a more conservative approach, I think it is, you know, proven based off of the stop-loss contracts that we have yielded and knowing that the stop-loss deficit is $2.7 million over the last five-plus years. You know, that's a big win because that is a very unrealistic scenario for most self-insured groups to basically have the stop-loss carrier take a loss almost every single year in being self-insured.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, Stacy Stovine, and again, Chase Ambrose from One Digital for your time tonight and the presentation.
Have a good evening.
Yes, thank you. All right. Proving that board services requires you to learn all about different industries. We're going to move from insurance now to commercial real estate.
Could I suggest a?
Yes, we could certainly take a, let's take a five or 10-minute break. That would be fine. Yes. Sorry, Lisa, you were just about to go on. We'll give you, we'll take 10 minutes and come back.
All right, can we check my mic? Are you hearing me?
I heard you. Just for what it's worth.
Thank you.
So the next section of our workshop this evening is going to be on the topic of open facilities. Asked to have this put out there as a workshop for the benefit of all of us for different reasons. Over the last year or plus, we have had in front of us the conversations and then the actions around buildings in our district. We closed some. We put some up for market. We're talking about putting some others up for market space and such. And so as I said, it's a benefit for all of us, for the new members, to get grounded a little bit on what's going on and why, where we've been, what we got in front of us. But also for those of us who've been around a little bit, a reminder of some of the things we have going on. So with that, we're going to have Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, and Stacy Colang and Jason Ervold of Ellers joining us this evening to talk about this. Lisa, I believe you're going to start. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you very much, Chair Miller, members of the board, Dr. Battle, for the opportunity to discuss our open facilities tonight. Tonight joining me is Stacy Colang of Ellers. And so I'm going to get us started off. The first, I'm going to share my screen here for you to see. And so you now should be seeing the presentation. And as we get started here, the overview, we will be covering these items tonight. Tonight is intended to be an update on the status of the open facilities and a brief summary of how we got here. More detailed presentations were provided to the Board of Education in workshops that were held June 18th of 2020 and September 24th of 2020. Those presentations are also available on the district website should anyone be interested. As we move to our next slide here, the guiding change and the action plan are both linked here. The guiding change document outlines in more detail the current situation, the outcomes that we want to achieve, and the things that we consider are not acceptable for us to do. The action plan was approved by the Board of Education on October 22nd, 2020 and authorized the next steps for possible sale or lease of open facilities for ISD 191. We did have legislation introduced in both the House and Senate this spring. However, at this time, neither bill has received a hearing. Although not all doors are closed, we may need to reconsider, we may need to consider our need to try again next session. On our purpose and commitment, this is, you know, our purpose is always to maximize the use of our open facilities. And as all are aware, our needs have been shifting significantly this past year. We want to leverage our resources as efficiently as possible. And our commitment throughout this process continues to include the items listed here, including the open and transparent engagement resulting in a cost-effective use of our facilities and resources. We're going to begin with River Ridge Education Center. February 25th, 2021, the board approved Transwestern as our broker for the sale of River Ridge Education Center. We have received reports from our broker regarding contacts made. And later you will learn more current details related to this property. A copy of the River Ridge Education Center-related portion of the action plan is also placed on the bottom of this slide. This next slide talks about back in April of 2020, what it is that we knew then would be our possible options and what location metro fitting implications and recommendations were identified for each of those options. This slide is unedited from the April 23 presentation, but it is provided to kind of give some history and background. Our Diamond Head Education Center, next steps here is the consideration of two to four acres of parking lot being sold for redevelopment. More detail is also later provided in this presentation. But again, added below here is the open facilities action plan segment that refers to the Diamond Head Education Center from the October approved action plan. Then we have our Metcalf Middle School. This building currently is used every Tuesday afternoon by Open Door, which provides food to our community in a parking lot drive-through model. It is understood by Open Door that we will provide 30 days of notice if we no longer can offer Metcalf Middle School as a location. Additionally, beginning just a little over a week ago, Dakota County Public Health is using the facility to vaccinate our community three days a week. This will continue until the need is no longer. Superintendent Battle and I are communicating with the Eagan and the Burnsville City Managers with their shared ideas as the Metcalf Middle School property is within the city, Eagan city limits and adjacent to the Burnsville city limits. As the board may recall, we had identified the outstanding debt balances that remain related to these various properties. And these calculations have been updated for the refunding 2020 A-bonds that decreased the amount of interest owed on the 2011 A-bonds this past fall. The balances for River Ridge Education Center and Metcalf Middle School are listed here. Almost one half of the Cedar School is currently leased through June 30, 2022 to another party. We continue to have questions related to, that need to be answered as to, and the answers to those questions may shift the next steps related to this particular building. The first question is if the current leasee will continue a similar lease agreement beyond June 30, 2022. And secondly, if the current leasee will possibly lease all of the Cedar School in the future. The leasing of the Cedar School in whole would require movement of our Burnsville Alternative High School to another location. And the rent and the common area maintenance revenue that we receive is listed for the current and the next fiscal year on this slide. As part of our work back in April 2020, this slide was shared as a summary of possible new locations for the Burnsville Alternative High School if Cedar School were leased. As part of our work back in April 2020, this slide was shared as a summary of possible new locations for the Burnsville Alternative High School if Cedar School were leased fully. This slide is unedited from the April of 2020 meeting and will be revisited to ensure our purpose and commitment for. Burnsville Alternative High School is met. Both Sue Trail and Mary W Savage have been used for childcare and as needed for testing locations this school year for our students who are virtual. The continued need for these schools is being monitored as we work through the pandemic. Additional space and we've been very fortunate to have this space available to use during this time in the capacity that we have done so. I will now ask Stacy to join us and provide more current information on a few of the properties.
Thank you, Chair and Directors. Just maybe a little introduction of who Ellers is for the newer board members. Ellers and Associates, we are a public finance firm, so we only represent cities, counties, and school districts. Typically, when you see us most in front of you as a board is in the times that you are issuing debt or if you are refinancing bonds for any of the projects or capital needs that you have. Or operating needs for your district. It's a little bit different. I work over on the city team side. I came in to help my partners on the school side to assist with. The transition of looking at dispositions of properties, which I spend a great deal of my time working with other communities on. To come up with a process to help you work through that to figure out which properties we're going to be disposed of. Potential assets that you can get from that and then going in and finding a broker or how we're going to actually go out to market and sell some of these. So I got a few slides just to update on each of the three properties rather quickly. The first one is for River Ridge. So as you know, this one, we did, as Lisa stated, retain Transwestern as the broker through the RFP process. They will be presenting later tonight in closed session an actual offer on the site. I think. I think the Chair and Vice Chair and staff that were in on the interviews when we talked with all the brokers, we anticipated. The quickest we would probably see a sale would be six months from the time we got done with some of the marketing materials and could take up to 18 months. So they weren't even quite ready to get the full marketing materials out and we already had a valid offer. So it's very exciting for the district, but we'll talk about that later. The second facility, as Lisa had stated, is you have some outlots located at the deck. And as noted on the map where the yellow arrow is and the yellow star. In discussions with developers, when we did some roundtables. We found that, you know, essentially you have enough parking or excess parking on that site for the needs that you have. Plus, there is the public ramp across the street on Pillsbury there as well that can be utilized. So really looking at opportunity to garner some additional dollars for the district would be to look to sell some of that excess parking as outlets. So we anticipate that there's probably two to four acres that would be available for sale there. Initial interest is really from the multifamily housing development side and that's pretty traditional of what we are seeing in all cities throughout the metro. Housing is really driving all the redevelopment. As you all know, retail is taking quite a hit, so it's harder to get those types of uses to come in. And really hotels have taken a hit as well. So we really viewed this more as a viable use for multifamily housing on it. So the great thing about this site is if and when we do go to market with it or find a developer for it. Is that there's no debt retire, retirement required for this. Let's go to the next slide, Lisa. And then the last one is your largest asset that you have, which is Metcalf Middle School. This one's currently zone quasi-public, so it's going to require what's called a comprehensive plan amendment with the city of Eagan. It's really not a big deal in the sense that. Once you identify a developer or purchaser for this property, it is their responsibility. When they make an offer to you, part of their due diligence would be to go through the process of rezoning the property for what they intend for the end uses. We really do view that this would be a mixed use site. It is 35 acres. It's a great location where it is. Now currently, we have a lot of broker interest. I think, you know, once we hit the market with River Ridge. The phones started ringing every other day with regards to Metcalf out there. So we were initially talking about reaching out to the development community in April on this property. But I think we might halt that process for a while and that's really coming into line with the fact that. You guys were looking at getting that special legislation. So any dollars that you would get from both the deck parcels. And from Metcalf, we were seeking special, special legislation to be able to put those into a different fund. So it was unrestricted so that you would have it available for. Education and programming for the district. With the fact that likely right now, we haven't gotten a hearing and we'll see if we can actually get something before the. Education, this bill comes out in both the House and the Senate. It's pretty slim and may not be likely. And as Lisa stated, it doesn't mean that it's not going to happen. It was a very, very busy year. Over at the legislature this year. So we would anticipate that you guys would go in and redo that legislation for next year. From my standpoint or perspective, I don't view it as a controversial legislation. It's been granted before and I don't think it's necessarily that large of an ask over the legislature. But it's more of a process issue that we have with regards to that. So that being said, anytime you get legislation, it's not final until the legislative session is done. So typically that timeframe is usually the end of June. And then legislation can't become effective until the end of the session and then approval by you. So. At this point in time, as I look at both the deck and Metcalf Middle School. I'm fearful to go out too soon with developers and brokers on offers because we are over a year and a half out. Before we even know if you're going to get that legislation. So I think we'll just regroup with staff and talk about timing and it may be something that we may start, especially with Metcalf. Maybe the beginning or spring of next year to start talking with folks about it. Just traditionally, the time process that it takes to get through a comprehensive plan change or amendment for this type of development. Could be about six months that would have to go through. So that would be our timeframe from even identifying a developer as part of that due diligence with regards to it. This property, as Lisa had stated, does have outstanding debt of approximately 7.268 million dollars with regards to that. So Lisa, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
So that concludes the information that we have to present to you this evening and we stand prepared to. Hear from you what next steps will be.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, the, the purpose tonight was to make sure everybody's on the same page and questions are answered. So please. Hear them if you have any about where we are or what. Some of this stuff kind of flies around and everybody always gets all those details like. I bet the legislative thing was probably something that may have been informational to you this evening. So questions on that? So just to clarify, we did not get the legislative exemption that we had hoped for this session. It's really a process issue. There was more bills than the legislature could handle and ours didn't make the cut. We're anticipating that getting it put through next session. As Stacy mentioned, it would not be in our interest to entertain. Offers on Metcalf specifically at least in the time being until that happens, although. Sure, there might be some chicken and egg things that happen at the end of the year, but we'll see.
Because if I understand. If I understand, because we, we owe like seven million. I mean, that's the debt of Metcalf. And the proposal is only like two million at this point, even though I know.
On Metcalf, we don't, we haven't had any proposals.
Okay.
Metcalf's the.
Well, that's River Ridge.
Yeah, the Metcalf's the middle school. We haven't had any proposals on that yet.
Okay, okay.
Eric, I had a question on the legislative exemption. And I'm not, I'm guessing this probably is a question for Stacy. Just for my own clarification and probably for others too. If we get the legisla, so basically state law requires us with, you know, when we get, when we sell property. Automatically, the proceeds would go to pay off the mortgage, essentially the mortgage. On that property, whether or not we have an exemption. And this is looking ahead again, not. In terms of Metcalf. If we do get a legislative exemption, does that mean that the seven. 7.26 million in debt is simply the mortgage? Or I guess. How much is mortgage and? Do we need to pay off the Vision 191 building bond debt? Before we can move to an exemption with the remaining proceeds?
Chair Director, that's a, that's a great question. Essentially, your exemption is, is twofold. It's, it's from state and federal exemptions because there's federal regulations due to the tax exempt nature of the bonds. You, once you receive an offer, so say you receive an offer for $10 million for the property. Upon closing, you know, 7.2 or whatever the debt is outstanding would be paid at that time at the closing. And you would have to have your exemption in place from the state of Minnesota before we could have that closing so that you could have the flexibility of those funds to go into. To, you know, the unrestricted fund that you wanted to go into.
And I guess my question is whether the 7.26 is mortgage plus building bond or is it simply mortgage?
That's outstanding bonds. For the portion of the improvements, yeah.
A vision 191 plus the mortgage. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions?
I might have a couple, Eric. I'm just looking.
Yeah, sure. That's fine. I think one of the positive things that we've learned. Through this process. We were headed into COVID and the. Commercial market was, you were basically told, being told was laying down dormant or dead. It looks like recent activity seems to demonstrated we have some opportunity in front of us. So that's good news.
Okay, I found my questions.
Yep.
On Diamond Head, I'm hearing you say that whether we sell off two or four acres, we have adequate parking spaces for our own use.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And refresh my memory, do lease agreements, do less see, with, with the lease agreements, do the less sees pay for custodial staff?
On the lease agreements, the, there are two segments. There's the rental of the space and then there is what we call. Common area maintenance. So the rental must go to debt service, provided we still owe debt on it. And that is the case for Cedar. And then the portion that is being paid for the common area maintenance is a reimbursement for our costs incurred for custodial. And maintenance of the building on their behalf. So that goes into the general fund and offsets those costs.
And is that the same at Metcalf too?
Metcalf is. Being rented through our facility use agreement with regard to Open Door. So it functions just like the rest of the rentals across the district. While the agreement we have with the Dakota County is more of a licensing agreement. And so that's a little bit unique, but there they will be reimbursing our costs as well for custodial.
Okay, good. Thank you. And Lisa, another question for you. In the last time we had talked about this. You had estimated that operational costs would be, would be reduced 10 to 20% once Metcalf was closed. Are we in that, in that ballpark?
I'd have to review those numbers and see if that's the case. I don't have that prepared for tonight. I can certainly bring that back.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. So Stacy, what I'm hearing you recommend is basically we sit tight. Until we get closer to the next legislative session in terms of preparing Metcalf for sale.
Mute.
Chair Commissioners, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And that would take about six months. Once we get close to the legislative session. You estimate it'll take about six months for us to get to a point where we might be able to receive or consider offers?
Director, essentially, you know, if we look to go out in the springtime to go and find offers or accept offers. If you get one early spring to late spring. That opportunity then for them to do their due diligence, which is typically going to be anywhere from 90 to 180 days. Gives them time to go through the process that they would need for any local approvals for rezoning of that property. So that would put us about timing of the end of the legislative session and the hopes that you would have your legislation. Or it'd actually end up being after that fact as well. So I think it would put us in a good position.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just for my clarification. Are there facilities that we are kind of holding on to? In case of anything, we understand during COVID, there were some that we were using for childcare. Some that were really beneficial to us to kind of navigate through the whole pandemic. And though a lot of this, this information is. You know, beneficial when it comes to financial ways. I'm just thinking, are there other, you know, just for backup. In case we're backup. I don't know who could answer this question.
Lisa, I'll go first.
Okay.
So if you look back to the 2020 action that the board. Approved, it was very specific about all of the properties. So that's really our. Our guidance. And so. It may need, the board may consider if they wanted to update.
I'll take a swing at that a little bit too. You're getting to the heart of a lot of deep conversations that we, that occurred with this board when we started exploring the concept of. Moving away from buildings. We talked about, do we think that. Climbing enrollment will turn around and then suddenly we'll need building. Burnsville is not cornfields anymore. You can't just go build a school out in the middle of one, right? You know, it'd be hard to find land if we, if we, and we would, it would be unfortunate. We set a board up 20 years from now. It's looking for land to buy to build a new school. We really felt that after a lot of discussion that, you know, we can't do the. We don't have perfect sight on the future, but we feel like the best case for now. Is to divest ourselves of the buildings that we are divesting and closing the ones. We did repurpose. Sue Trail and MW and what exactly holds for the future for those buildings is still up in the air. I doubt MW probably would ever return as a full school given its age, but. I don't know. The property might be reused. Who knows? The reality is when. We look at enrollment numbers. It's not just that it's going down every year. It has gone down for a long time. And just to reverse it to zero would mean we're still down here where we used to be back up here when we needed all those buildings. So we would not only have to reverse. The outflow, we would then have to take a dramatic turn and go back up the mountain. And that's really frankly going to be quite a ways away timing wise. At least that was the feeling of this board. But to Dr. Battle's point, you know, it's an ongoing thing we will need to keep our eyes on.
I think the other thing that we were informed of too, so especially like with. Metcalf with being the third middle school is that something we had heard that. Eagle Ridge has the capacity to build out, so therefore we wouldn't likely need a third middle school so that. We would still be able to be, able to be efficient for growth with two middle schools. And that there was. Discussion about like if we were to. You know, sell River Ridge, where would we then move the bus program? Is there somewhere within the district that would have the space, whether that was MW Savage? What could we be doing with Sue Trail, knowing that it's, if we're going to grow maybe in the elementary level, we may need one of those still, two of those still schools. And. What was the other one? Oh, and then like with what's ever happening with Cedar School, I think that was the other big discussion too. So. If the current. Group that we lease with, that leases from us for Cedar School actually needs the whole space, we would need to move BOS. And so. You'll see in what Lisa shared that one of our priorities was to move like. That hearing from staff and the leadership teams is that the best place to position BOS would be MW Savage. So we would actually still be. Utilizing that school, but it's not, it's not needed for BOS to move into like Metcalf, which is like closer in proximity. And so I think there was a lot of, a lot of discussions around, around those. So you'll see like, kind of like rank order of some of the options that we're discussing, kind of where. Where we tended to land.
And also, part of that, that was a great summary, Leslie. Part of that too is thinking about. Everything that we heard from our families while we were talking about closing schools and how painful it was for the families. That we wanted to plan long term to try to disrupt things as little as possible for future families. So going, you know, Leslie, you know, being able, as Leslie mentioned, being able to build out. At one of our middle schools as opposed to going through another split. Back across three middle schools, it would be kinder to the families to simply. it would be kinder to the families to simply keep them within two middle schools in addition to the efficiencies and, you know, really the, the strength that, that, that happens is as staff and students stay in place.
Good questions and great conversation. Anything else? Okay, not seeing any. As was mentioned in the presentation, we do have in front of us an offer for River Ridge. Due to the private nature of such an offer, and we are going to evoke our ability to go to a closed session and discuss it as a board. So at this moment, I will need a motion to approve moving to a closed session as permitted by Minnesota State Statute 13D 05 subdivision 3 to consider an offer on River Ridge Education Center.
So moved?
Moved by Director Al. Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Chester.
I can take the roll. Word? What happened?
All right, Ms. Kenny, can you hear us? Ms. Kenny, can you hear us?
I can now.
Excellent. Will you please indulge us by calling the roll?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Word?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Said?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Chester?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Hume?
Aye.
Very well, and we will, as voted on, move to a closed session. The, this meeting will go quiet until such time and we will return. If we will, are to have action tonight, it will be at that point, then we will adjourn our evening meeting.
That was weird. I did too. And now I can't turn my mic on.
Okay, thank you. We are back from our closed session and we are going to move to a vote on the offer in front of us. The district received an offer to purchase the River Ridge facility and based upon that offer and discussions with the board and consultants, do I have a motion to direct staff and consultants to begin negotiation of a purchase agreement to be brought back for formal approval at a future board meeting?
So moved?
Moved by Director Alt.
Seconded.
Nope, go ahead Tony. Seconded by Director Connor. There will be no discussion on this item because it's already been discussed in the closed session. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Alt?
Aye.
Said?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Chester?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Hume?
Aye.
Werb?
Aye.
The motion carries with all members voting in favor. The meeting is now adjourned, our regular scheduled meeting is now adjourned at 9:45 p.m.